Ready, Brad?
Yep.
Okay, at this time I'll call the December 4th, 2014 Dixon County Commission Meeting to order. Would you please stand and join in the flight salute. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, for the agenda, we do have three additions that we're going to add to it. First of all, we'll review and sign the plumbing contract. This is on regards to the Navar can step program. Also, the second item we'll place on there, the agenda is to review and consider contracts. This is for police protection with the cities of Solomon and Hope. And then, the third item will be an executive session for non-elected personnel issues. And when we get to that, Brad, you can tell us what we need to, time-wise, on that. So I would go ahead and move that we approve the amended agenda.
Second.
We have the motion and the second for approval of the amended agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next item is that of the consent agenda. This includes the minutes of November 20th work session, the regular meeting, also payroll of $250,000 and $250,982 and 10 cents, fund expenditures of $133,501 and 14 cents, abatements of $8,494 and 4 cents, added taxes of $795 and 82 cents, wire payments of $125,223.
I move that we approve the consent agenda. Second.
We have the motion and the second for approval of the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. At this time, we'll go to Commissioner Comments, Craig, if you'd want to go ahead and lead off on that.
Yeah, well, I'll be attending the North Central Regional Plant and Commission meeting this afternoon in Beloit, and then I will be attending the reorganization of the Extension Board meeting here at Stro Hall tonight. Did have, I did send a notification of the bridges that were to be closed. I called a couple of people, let them know that about the two bridges in my district that would be closed, and told them we'd be trying to work out some kind of a, you know, what kind of solutions we came up with and to ease their pain, or why we couldn't repair it or from new and there, why we wouldn't be doing it. But we'll be looking at that the next, after first of year, maybe get township boards in and some of the landowners to get some input. That's all I had, Lynn.
Okay. Thank you. Laverne?
Yeah, I also will be attending the Extension Reorganization meeting tonight. Also, this time of year, we just got, last week, didn't have a meeting because of Thanksgiving, but it always is a good time to give thanks for all the things that we do enjoy in life, and so we had a very good Thanksgiving day. I was wondering on the roads there, Craig, are those, if they have to go around the section, are they all-weather roads, or do they need to be?
No. The one, both of them are through, well, in a flood line, so to speak. No, they're, they're not gravel roads to them either one.
Oh, okay.
The biggest, the one, the 13200 Avenue, it's about, well, if you're at the bridge, you'd have to go four miles around, and the one down Quail Road, if you're at the bridge, it's about eight miles to go around.
Hmm.
Something like that.
However, for many years, the farmers been going around the bridge.
Yes, the Polans.
They haven't been crossing.
Yeah.
They couldn't.
With any, with any car or truck.
Yeah, the Polans knew that they didn't want to damage the structure, but there's other people that use it that weren't, well, I've seen a trash truck go across, let's put this way, one of the waste management's last year.
Hmm.
You know, yeah. The ones from the Ted Ryan Bridge, yeah.
But, equipment with the Union.
No, it's too small. Yeah, the Ted Ryan Bridge rather than the Wilson Bridge, it's wider even then.
So as far as the effects on agriculture or?
Right, yeah. It's just a matter of timing.
Convenience, convenience for faster trucker cars.
Yeah.
Okay. Is it all you had?
Yes.
Okay. I had notification, they're having a KAC meeting, board meeting, that's going to be December 12th, and so that'll be the first one that I'll be attending, and I'll be in Topeka. And other than that, I don't have anything to add right now. We do not have any proclamations or other public comments, and so at this time, we'll go ahead and have Brad give his report, please.
Well, it's been two weeks, but right before Thanksgiving, I did get a message from John Sacks with the Senator Rand's office, and he had wanted to let me know that they had sent their questioning regarding the question on our grant application for the safe room out at Stro Hall to FEMA, and FEMA had set up from Region 7 office up to FEMA headquarters for some response, and he was still waiting on that response. He wanted to let me know that we hadn't forgotten about it, and I appreciated that very much on his part, so we are still waiting. We've already talked a little bit about the two bridges that we were notified last week that need to be closed, and that's 2845 Quail and the 13200, and the 13200 bridge is actually one that's on the National Bridge Historical Registry. And again, neither one has been capable of carrying any weight for a long time, they've just, I believe the Oak Road was built in 1904, and the Quail Road was built in 1905, according to our records, so.
And I think we're on the 1895.
Pardon?
I think it was 1895.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
But that's only 10 years, but that'd be able to make much difference.
Get that much age.
Yeah.
They've served well, and?
I hope I'm still working it.
So, we've talked about the Christmas party, we talked about that a little bit later, but we are still waiting to confirm a date with Dr. Owens. We actually had, he and Tom were available when we were going to KAC, and we're swing word here, so he's tried to get a date scheduled where he can come in here during the month of December, and if not, maybe after the first year and have a board of health meetings, so. And I have reached out to Representative Barker and Senator Arpkey. John responded back that he will be here next week at nine o'clock. He was not available on the 18th, he's going to be in Topeka at meetings, and I'm still waiting to hear from Tom on when he might be available. I did provide you with a copy of a proposed resolution to repayment on the TIF funding that I sent to Solomon, and have split that strategically so that it doesn't negatively impact the school's budget, which they're really the ones that are a little more critical than we are, but to get it done in the same timeframe, so. And I haven't heard anything back from them. I assume it'll be after the next city commission meeting before I hear anything as far as yes or no, so. But since we're approaching the first of year, I thought to keep that issue alive, I wanted to send it to them and make a recommendation to them, so.
The transport of education, is that going to, how's that going to affect the Solomon School? Will that just be less money they'll get, or does that have been?
Yeah, it's just less money they'll get in their general fund obligation, is my understanding, so. It's not, it's not like our budget where it'll be money we put back into years, they'll take it in, and then it's just less the state will give them, so.
But.
It's kind of a wash either way.
That's why I assumed it'd be that way, yeah.
But their auditor said that they didn't want to have too much coming in because that may affect the following year, too, even though they may or may not have a certain amount of money coming in, so. Provided you a copy of the year-to-date staffing reports, we only had one, one person that has left in the last month, and that was one of the sheriff's deputies that resigned and went into private business, and I think he was just looking to replace that position. Cash, cash balance reports from Janelle, we've got a copy of those. Going through the budgets, everybody has done a very exceptionally good job of monitoring their budgets throughout the year. The one that's low to see me is the Health Department, of course, it's always that way, but we have quite a bit of revenue out there we're reading to receive on bills that have been sent out throughout our normal process, that will come in. Don't know whether we'll make the full amount of revenue that we had estimated, but we should be close, but there's nothing there in the law, just Janelle, it's just kind of the normal way that the process works, revenue. In that environment, never comes in at the same, you know, like here in the health, so it's always in the rear's. The one thing that we're a little concerned about is back again on the sales tax. Sales tax has been down again in September numbers, a little bit. It doesn't look like we'll quite get to the 1.175 that we've been closed unless we have a really good October month, which I don't anticipate will be that much higher, but it's what it is. I don't know what we're going to do about it, we'll just keep hoping, so. It's not low enough that it's shocking to us, I mean, we're going to be within, you know, a few thousand dollars of where we proposed, but we're not going to surpass it like we hoped to, so. But given the year that we've had, and now with all the company businesses and stuff, it's probably not bad considering your home, so. Also, along the budget wise, you've got a sheet in there, a letter from Janelle to us that, what she is recommending that we do for carryovers, transfers to our capital reserves here at the end of the year. And I want details on that, it kind of speaks for itself if you have any questions, but if you have any questions, I'd like to try and answer them. It looks like we'll go with my recommendation, carryover about $419,000 for various accounts. Some of them are a little less than we normally do, but then we've got some other expenses that will come up, so. If we need to talk about that some more next week, confirm again.
Well, actually, that is pretty close to what you say what was.
What she proposed, yeah. We do have, as of yesterday, we officially have specialty venue insurance in place for the events that we're going to have involved liquor at Stro Hall. I was able to get that paperwork done, and we have the heat schedule, I got an ESP as well. Looks like ballpark for a person that, less than 1,000 people, which most events at Stro Hall would be less than that, 1,000 people, if they're, if they want to consume liquor there, it will be an extra hundred dollars for being there, up to four days in length. Most of them are going to be more than one evening or something, but if they wanted to sell liquor, and they have a liquor license, it means a requirement, so I think it's $200. And it, they also add a little bit based on the, what they propose to be the estimated amount of sales, so it's, it's still within the realm of being affordable, so.
And I know we had some discussion, you know, like, well, Safe Evidence Forever has it up there, it'll be up to Fair Board then to decide if they, you know, if they hire somebody to set up the tables and stuff, or is that in the?
That's be completely up to them.
That's, I made that assumption, so, but yeah.
That'd be up to them, where they, they have a fee for the fair personnel to do that, or what Safe Evidence Forever does, that's, that's, it always has been.
Right.
We'll get that up to them, but our primary concern is going to be the, we have two areas, one, that we have insurance in place that covers us.
Right, right.
If there's liquor involved, and two, the indemnification that we're, that they signed with the lease agreement that basically holds us, I guess, that they're carrying the insurance and they're responsible for everything, so.
Well, I just, which, all three of us, Commissioner, I hope, you know, it was supposed to be a rate, you know, to generate some more income and stuff, and I'd like to think that they had covered themselves, you know, by then just providing a service, which I mean is part of it, too, but to be able to generate some revenue.
Well, they'll be in, on the 18th, I think, correct?
Okay, good. Yeah, we can talk to them then, but.
I know Jean said that they had, they've got one, one Christmas party that's already booked, that was wanting to have alcohol and they didn't serve what we require, that's been two or three weeks ago when I talked to her about it, so I don't know what they had said, so. We do have some monthly reports that I'll have to send in to this insurance company. You'll see a bill come through for $2,000, I mentioned, that's, we pay that upfront, and then each event, I log and put it on this report, and they take that off to 2,000 until we've used all that 2,000 up, and then they bill us accordingly, so. But we'll just have to keep track of and report to them whenever we're actually using that insurance policy, so. It's, it's really designed for any kind of special event, and liquor, it's not unique or specific to liquor.
Right.
That's just one of the things it covers. The Federal Association already has their own event insurance, it covers everything except for liquor, so we will only use this policy, whatever liquor's involved, no users for all the other events, so. But everything's progressing very well on that, so. We have set up the, Brenda's office, you may have noticed, it's been rearranged a little bit, and we added a desk in there that we were able to grab out of another office, and Dick has got a phone and a computer hooked up, and we had, that was spares for the Economic Development Council, to kind of give them a place to work in the meantime, and bring them, with that, and giving them some, some secretary on the grid stream support there once again, so. I'll have some more details in the future on that, but we're slowly progressing on that as well. The Healthy Part of Concrete project is completed, that was completed back open last week. We talked a little bit in the work session about the file update, we did have some extra costs associated with that, to excavate out the wet ground, put in the French drain, and do the boiling and stuff to get that done, but it went just as we had anticipated, it would once we opened it up, looks very nice, we've got the, the apartment bumpers in, and hopefully we won't have to mess with that, at least that section open for many years to come now. And Old Forty, the other project that you approved was completed a week before last, just as it was planned, they started on Monday morning, like we had to, it back open on Friday afternoon, with Martin removing the barricades, I think he finished Thursday, and I agree with you there several times, tremendous difference, so I'm sure that we'll travel that road, which we know are many, are appreciated, so. And then on the staffing, the salary, we just wanted to confirm, you know, we've talked about doing that staggered increases on that, if that's still where you were at, and want to make sure that before we make any announcements on that, that that's still what you guys were thinking on that, since we're at that point here, we need to be doing that, so. That's all good.
I guess, from no response to that, kind of the assumption we are, that's where we're staying on as far as the salaries?
Yeah.
And staff increases?
Of course, that's based on the performance evaluation, that doesn't mean anybody's guaranteed that amount.
That's a maximum.
That's maximum, correct.
But we budged it, factoring that in, and then?
Right.
And then it should come in less than that, or most likely wouldn't. Okay. At this time, we'll go ahead, I'll move on to notices and communications, and we did have just a few things that have come in the mail. Have a letter from Martha Dittman from Woodbine, Kansas, and a little bit of what her concerns is, and I think we can probably address this information. It was based on an article from the Harrington Times, and it has to do with their hospital petition and the process down there, and she just attached that, but she mentioned that they had a town hall meeting there at Woodbine, and one of the things that was not answered, in her opinion, and I wasn't there, I don't know if any, any of you were there, but it just, it said they were told being a registered voter was not an issue, and it also had to do with the petition that they have there, and so anyway, she's just requesting an update on, she, I would be interested as to the current standing of this petition, since the hospital board is no longer publishing that information, and so I don't know if that's something that we would comment in on, or you can evaluate that, Brad, to see what response we should have.
No, I was, it's the, it wasn't going to bring it to vote, but that, correct me if I'm wrong, you have to have somebody of the registered voters sign, they don't have to, or, I said, somebody registered voters just have to vote, yeah, it doesn't have to be registered, just to be.
Qualified electors.
Qualified electors, yeah, that's, yeah, that's.
The Harrington paper was printing, how many they had, and, you know, they've been doing this for a year or more, and, but the last few issues I've looked at, it wasn't in the Harrington paper, that I noticed, so, I just, I think they had to have, they were short several hundred, I'm sure.
So if they submit a petition, there is a timeframe, in our opinion, on that?
Yes.
And so, would they submit that to the commission, and would that actually be submitted to Barb or both of us?
Well, I think it would come through Barb for your review, but my interpretation of that petition is they have obtained their signature within six months of the first signature, and I think Harrington feels that that's not accurate, but that's what I consider it to be, is within six months of the first signature, not just signatures, and then two years later, you submit a petition, or sometime later, so we'll have to see if there is a petition that is submitted, what's the time of those signatures.
And I think the other thing, too, we certainly solicit the advice and opinion of the Secretary of State's office, and Barb, you could do that, just to, you know, know that we aren't just randomly trying to make a call on this.
I took that from the Secretary of State's office.
Yeah, yeah, so I, you know, I think they would have to accept that, that it's not.
It's the same way though, Doug, if, like, on any petition, they have to be notarized in, you know, print and sign your name, and?
There's a format that they have to follow, it's not an authorized signature, but it is a, the petition has a certain format.
Okay.
They have to follow, and I'm assuming they're doing that.
Yeah, it's not like one for, well, like carried for my petition, the money put on the board, in a ballot, but it's, yeah, it's probably similar to that, but different.
Well, there's a, I haven't seen the petition that they're operating on for a while, but there is a format that has to be followed, and I suspect they're following that.
You can't just take a piece of paper out and sign it, and?
Right, no, no.
After the question, or?
Yeah, and it's qualified electors, just like.
Yeah, I guess the confusing thing to me was, they, they had not reached, at the end of the six months, they had not reached the number they needed, but they continued to get names, and, and I guess, I don't know, you know, I could tell just a few months ago, they were still trying to get names, but, you know, I, I don't know why they are continuing that if, if it's not going to do them any good, I don't.
Well, I think they have a different opinion about the timeframe that applies than what I've shared with them, I think it's six months from the first signature, and I think they believe it's a longer period of time.
But you had shared that information with them.
Oh, yes, I shared it with them, and we contacted the Secretary of State for their opinion and received that consistent information, so, you know, if they have something different than that, I guess we'll just have to see if they file a petition.
And I kind of assume, since she has a Woodbine address, that she's in the Union Township, and it is actually, that hospital district is just inclusive of Harrington, as well as some of the southeast townships.
Well, it's all in that corner there, yeah.
Yeah, there's just a small group, so.
Lions, Union.
So that's where the signatures need to come from, is within that hospital district, and it seems like.
Well, see, they don't have a hospital district, that's what they're wanting to do.
Oh, they're trying to create.
They're trying to create one.
Yeah, it's just a municipal hospital, so.
They're trying to expand it.
They're trying to expand it to include those townships as a district.
So that's why, and that's their level of concern, but, okay. Yeah, I recall that as soon as I said that, but that was the instance, so, thanks for the clarification. Any other comments on that, or are we going to, would we send some sort of response?
I'll check with the city manager here and see if he can give me an update, and then I'll reply back tomorrow and let her know what we've got.
Okay.
Whatever information it is, so.
The next letter I had, this is in regards on the Eighth Judicial District, and it's just an acquisition of property by eminent domain, and we've had notification on this before, and I think they just continue to send it out, and the most recent filing was on November 24th, and this is Wester Energy, is the plaintiff, and Myron Frick, the defendants, and so I think it's just a, an easement that they're looking at. This one's addressed to Laverne, I'll go ahead.
Go ahead.
This is just notification, VYVE broadband, and, and so anyway, they, it's just to notify as far as some adjustments on their monthly fee and a surcharge fee, and this will be, this isn't something we have control of, but I think part of the agreement is that they notify us, so that's what we have with them, and it's a surcharge fee increase of $2.25 effective January 1st, 2015. What areas are they in, you recall? And this is just a second letter in regards to Wester Energy and Myron Frick, and the, has notice of a payment and award and cost of appraiser fees for removal of personal property, so.
Is there going to be a hearing on that?
Well, it looks, okay, I guess what this is, it just says that, that they're going to be paying to the clerk of the district court the full amount of the appraisers' award of $2,500, and also court costs accrue, which is $450, and, so it looks like they've reached a decision on that. And the other thing we have here is the National Association of Counties newspaper, and I believe that's all. Oh, one other thing, I had a letter, and indicated they wanted to share it with the commissioners, and Laverne, I guess you've had a chance to look at it, and Craig has, and it's from Faith Sum, and it is in regards to kind of a dispute that she's having with the Appraisers' Office, and, you know, procedurally, there is a process and a protocol on that, and she's kind of taken exception to that, so. Hi there.
Hello.
How can I help you?
Merry Christmas.
Hello.
My friend.
I'll take them all.
Yeah.
One for the clerk.
Oh, thanks.
Okay, okay.
I brought the plants, and, oh, good. I don't know if Mark is there or not. I think he's sick today. And Joe's out of town. He's been.
And you are with, you're familiar with?
I'm with G. Consultants, so, yeah. Yeah, my name is Monia Laxer.
Okay.
Engineering bridge engineer.
Okay.
Road and bridge engineer.
Well, thank you so much.
Thanks.
I'll see if I can fill them off here.
All right. Merry Christmas, my goodness.
Yeah. Back on the part as far as Faith Sum, she did send us that letter, so are we going to, probably should send a response back to her, just on, speaking on behalf of the county commission on it, because she wanted to know what involvement we have, and of course, we did not have any jurisdictional portion as far as over the Appraisers' Office, or Doug, do you want to weigh in on this?
Yeah, she has an appeal that she has filed from the decision made by the Appraiser's Office, and that goes to the Board of Tax Appeals, and it actually comes up on the 5th of December, the Appraiser and representative of the Appraiser's Office will be at the hearing, and she'll have the opportunity to present her position at that time to the Board of Tax Appeals. Now, I'm going to be in, tomorrow, I will be in the, confirming the tax sale in front of Judge Platt, but I won't be at that hearing, but there is a hearing tomorrow, and the Appraiser's Office will be there, and so we'll claim it, and she'll be proceeding from there. So they'll be making a decision based upon her appeal, and that will go through the Board of Tax Appeals.
Very good, thank, any other questions or comments?
As far as replying back to her, you know, she's indicated in there that she may take litigation against the county, it may be smart to, if there's any replies, to have Doug make to her, reply rather than, I don't know if you've seen all the copies that she's sent over to everybody, but she's threatened to sue the county over this thing, and?
I think she's taking an appropriate remedy by going to the Board of Tax Appeals if she thinks that the evaluation on her property is too high, and that will be a decision, she'll have options available to her from there, but I don't know of anything that the county can address, she's taking the procedure, going through an appellate procedure, so I don't know of a response that could be given that the Board of Tax Appeals would give tomorrow, one way or the other.
Okay. Probably should just wait and see how. Well, probably should just wait and see how that goes for her. And of course, I, you know, we welcome people to ask us questions or make a phone call or send a letter. But I mean, this is an instance where, you know, procedurally, it's not something that we handle, so. Okay. That's all I have, then. The next item we have, or did anyone else have anything other than, Craig's really guarding those, maybe we should pass those down here.
Wait, you might leave?
I could probably send mine, too, that I already need it. Hey, you're welcome. I can get it for you.
And I should have mentioned in my remarks, we did get a box of cookies here. And these were the 4-H kids that are on the 4-H council that put these together. And these are homemade cookies from the 4-H families. They were, we can share these cookies with anybody at once.
I won't spend too much time on this, but I think you'll probably want to take a look at this because it comes from an engineering firm. And so they have a picture of the globe in Santa Slay. And then, as an engineering firm would do, they have the proximity and location of the various things that are in each container. And that's the top view.
So it's very engineered.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, they had a special tin made.
Yeah, so this really is, this is pretty impressive. And if you read this, there's no calories involved, so you might want to spend more time with that.
Well, I hope it's under 20 bucks.
Okay. So we are going to go on to, we have to review and consider the resolution approving the 0.5% sales tax for road and bridge improvements. And that resolution is 120414. And it's authorizing the imposition of the special half-cent countywide retailer's sales tax for bridge and roadway construction and improvements. Do you have any comments on this, Brad?
No, this is simply a resolution as a final action that tells the Department of Revenue that it has passed, that you followed the appropriate steps through the election process, and that they need to implement that as soon as possible.
Okay.
Their implementation will be the first debate, but we haven't had a full quarter, so.
Yes, and that's what they have, is that this actually will go into effect or commence on April 1st, 2015, and shall expire after five years from the date that the such tax is first collected. So is there any questions? Otherwise, a motion for approval?
I don't have a resolution number there, but ultimately, we approve the resolution to approve the half-cent sales tax for road bridges.
Yeah, and it's just today's date, 120414.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, we have the motion for resolution adoption 120414. Any further discussion?
We had some discussion, work session about how we tend to implement, you know, the, you want to highlight that, highlight that, Lynn or Brad?
Okay, yeah, before the motion, after the motion, second, I'll go ahead and offer a little discussion on that or a comment. We are going to probably have Martin and John Goff come in and give a little bit of a presentation to us or a discussion as far as what they feel, some of the specific needs and some priorities as far as bridges and roads. And then also, we may have some additional ideas or comments. And Brad, on that, that, so we'll go ahead and try to just come up with kind of a plan of action. This is what we'll take care of first and in what order. And, and that's, you know, kind of a county, barring for the unforeseen. I mean, if there's something that, you know, comes up that we aren't aware of on a particular bridge or road, that, that could change that variable.
Yeah, hopefully we wouldn't come up with an incident we'd have to spend all of it for one project. But that could happen. I mean, a million dollars didn't go that far. But we talked about, you know, the road striping, you know, putting out on a plan and having John and doing that. And levering that money to give other grants, you know, stuff. But I just want the deckers to know that we're not going to be spending frivolously trying to maximize the capital they've given us to get the best benefit.
Okay, very good. We do have the motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And this is something that we'll need the signature of each of us on here, so. Okay, we do not have any other resolutions or unfinished business. Moving on to other business, the first thing we have is to review and consider agreements for some property purchases. And this is something that Brad, I think you have some contracts to present to us. And so if you go ahead and share that information at this time, please.
Yes, in anticipation of the future Justice Center that has been in the plans, we negotiated with the two property owners that own property adjacent to the county attorney's office and to the county's parking lot to purchase two vacant homes that are there. I would say some of the light homes that are located there to own, Silver County would own that property ahead of time and not have to worry about trying to acquire it later from, and having a family evicted or something like that. That certainly is never, never pleasant publicly. The two properties, one is at 203 East First Street. The other one is addressed to 205 East First Street. And we negotiated and come to an agreement with the owners of both properties, that being Stephen and Melissa Blackett, and Dickinson County Bank and Enterprise to purchase those two properties from them.
And both those properties are on the north side of the street, on First Street. And they're directly east of where the county attorney's office is right now.
That's correct.
And the intention we would have, because of the condition of the homes, that we would probably raise the building and it'd be a vacant lot at this time. So that'll probably be a future event that happens.
I think our crews could do that one time in a while, so.
Well, it is an opportune time to, since they are, no one's lived in those properties at this time, so it's...
They own the property, yeah.
Yeah, and so it is an opportunity to buy them without disturbing anybody that they're living there.
And I think probably, of course, it's up to you, but since this is kind of a preempting action on behalf of the Justice Center, this could actually probably come out of that particular budget that we set aside, you know, this year, the $370,000. And of course, after the first year, we'll have another, I don't know exactly what it is, but it'll be a little bit more than $370,000 because our assessed valuation will come in this.
And I'll direct this comment to Doug to answer that. But if, assuming we have the motion to enter these two agreements, this is just kind of the next step. And then there's still the securement of clear titles and so on. I mean, just procedurally, there'll be a...
That's correct.
Closing at a later date.
The documents you have in front of you are two contracts with those two property owners. And they have been signed by the property owners. And when, if the county chooses to sign this, that does not finalize the agreement. What next takes place is that there would be title search and to make sure that there was clear title. And the county would not be buying if it were not clear title to the property. And once that is determined that it is clear title, then the county would be in position to finalize the contract. So the contract being approved, it doesn't make it happen. It just starts that mechanism so that there would be, the title search is done. And then if the title searches are cleared, then the county's able to issue the check and become the owners of the property. If title's not clear, the county would not continue to close out the transaction.
But this would be pretty much a standard type procedure that you would use...
Yes.
Prudently on any property you'd want to purchase.
Almost every real estate transaction would follow that same procedure.
Are there any questions from the commissioner comments?
No, it looks like a standard contract, I mean.
I'll go ahead and make the motion that, on behalf of the commission, that we enter into this contract for sale of real estate property. And there's, there's actually the two properties, as Brad had mentioned. He said what, 203 East First Street, Abilene, Kansas. And this is the property that the Blackett letters own. And then the second property...
205?
205 East First Street.
Dickinson County Bank.
Yes, and that's Dickinson, Dickinson County Bank is the current owner of that. So I've got that motion to enter into these two contractual agreements to proceed.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have the motion and the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Turn that back over to Brad and Doug to do the follow-up on that. The next item we have is one that was added to our agenda. And this is to review and sign the plumber contracts. And this is for the Navarre Can Step Program.
This is the, just the contract that, that you approved a few weeks ago. This is the final contract with Brian's Plumbing. And I don't have them tagged, but there's several places through there that they need to sign. It would be that after meeting if you want to. I don't know if you do that. I think there's three copies in several places on each one, so. But you've already approved the plumber's bid. This is just a contract to finalize that, so.
Okay. Any questions from the commission? Otherwise, we just need the motion to, that we have reviewed this and are signing this contract.
Don't move.
I'll second.
Got the motion and the second, for reviewing and signing this contract with BG Consultants. And this is on the Navarre Can Step Program. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item we have is to review and consider contracts. And this is on, for police protection. And this is for the City of Solomon and also the City of Hope. And this is really a renewal type situation of what we've done previously.
That's exactly what it is. We've contracted for a number of years with both. Solomon's been longer than Hope, but this is a renewal of the annual police protection contract that they have with the Sheriff's Department and the county. And there's no changes to either contract. The amounts are the same. They typically, it's my understanding, increased those a little bit every other year. We did increase slightly last year, but this year it's the same as last year. Or for next year, it's the same as this year.
And from what I gather, I mean, the sheriff has communicated with them and, and they've also with him and as far as the times he visits and just to make sure it's adequate coverage.
I believe they're satisfied.
So it's a good working relationship.
We'll find out if they sign the contract.
Well, sure. Okay. We have a motion for approval of these two contracts.
Don't move.
I'll second.
Have the motion and the second for approval to enter these contractual agreements for police protection. This is with the cities of Solomon and also the City of Hope. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Was that for the same amount as I came in to?
Gareth does report to them on a local basis with the city council meeting. So I'm sure that if they weren't satisfied, he would have known about it long before then. Yeah, we, I think we increased it last year. And typically, we've looked at an increase every other year.
Yeah.
So this would be the middle year that we need to be in, isn't it?
Okay. The next item we have is that of an executive session. And this is for non-elected personnel. And what is the time that you anticipate on this, Brad?
I think probably 10 minutes would be sufficient. Craig's probably going to be...
No, I, long as I'm out here by quarter after.
Yeah.
Hold on to that green deal till he's...
Maybe we'll say 15, that way we're not...
15 minutes? Okay. And this would include Doug?
I don't think Doug, unless he wants to say...
Or Doug, okay. So it'd just be Brad and the three county commissioners?
Yeah.
I'll go ahead and make that motion that we do enter executive session for 15 minutes to include discussions on non-elected personnel. And we'll start that at 11:47.
Second.
We have the motion in the second to enter executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and give the motion that we return to regular session from executive session.
I'll say it then.
You have the motion and the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and I'm an aye also opposed, motion carries. One of the things that we did discuss was non-elected personnel, and on Brad's report, one of the things that had come up is we had the amount of increase that we were going to have people on their evaluation, and also we had discussion on, there could be some department heads who'd be, their salary could be adjusted apart from that particular formula, about that if needed.
So the, we stay with what the recommendation was, the, less than, less than 50% salary would get.
No, less than 50,000.
50,000, we'd get 3%. 50,000 to 70,000, we'd get 2.5%, and the greater than 70,000, we'd be at 2%.
Could be all done for that.
Yeah.
It could be.
Based on the performance.
Yeah. And then we did have a discussion that in instances, there are some department heads where we've done some comparisons to other positions throughout the state and responsibilities that they have, that we could vary, Brad would be allowed to vary from that formula in those few isolated instances. So is there a motion for that?
You get, you get all that, Mark?
Nuh-uh.
You should have the recording.
3% under 50.
Well, I got, I got that part, but is there?
And Brad has the authorities to.
Well, we also give Brad the authority to adjust some department head salaries.
Aside from that formula.
Using comparisons of statewide, comparisons.
So was that your motion?
Yes.
Second.
We have that motion, we have the second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The other thing we have is a performance evaluation for our county administrator, and so each of us have this to take home for a review, and we'll go ahead and place that on the agenda for December 18th. If you'd have those returned, we can have those compiled, and we'll take care of that on December 18th at that Thursday meeting.
One question that just came to my mind, that you may have, I don't know, on so many elected officials as far as, will the same thing go for elected officials, because usually they have several?
On.
Is it evaluated, of course, as far as salary?
Yes, yes.
Just for clarification.
Yeah, and if we'd have those amounts, and, because we do have our approved budget, that we'll want to factor all that in.
And you'll do that on the 18th?
On the 18th also.
Okay.
We'll adjourn.
We have a motion for adjournment. I'll second it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned.